We're going to reconvene the January 26, 2021, regularly scored, regularly scheduled board meeting. If I can have a motion to come out of executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Mackey.
I'd like to move at the record reflect that we concluded executive session and resumed and returned for public session at 6:04 PM.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote. Dr. Elkins, are you logged in?
I am logged in, but it has not popped up on my screen.
Yeah, it hasn't popped up on ours either. Yeah, it'll be there one second. So you just want to do a hand vote? Okay, if we can just do our voice vote since we have Dr. Elkins on the phone. All in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. We will now move on to the inspirational moment, Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to share some inspirational words this evening by a talented young person by the name of Amanda Gorman, who is the first person to be named a National Youth Poet Laureate and the youngest poet laureate in the United States history. She's only 22 years old, a cum laude graduate from Harvard University and an award-winning writer, as well as a ton of other accolades, writing for publications such as The New York Times. She's a very, and she's the youngest person ever to have spoken at a presidential inauguration ever of any kind. So we'll hear a few inspirational words from a young person.
Hi, I'm Amanda Gorman, and this is my poem, "The Miracle of Morning." I thought I'd awaken to a world in mourning, heavy clouds crowding, a society storming. But there's something different on this golden morning, something magical in the sunlight, wide and warming. I see a dad with a stroller taking a jog across the street. A bright-eyed girl chases her dog. A grandma on a porch fingers her rosaries. She grins as her young neighbor brings her groceries while we might feel small, separate, and all alone. Our people have never been more closely tethered because the question isn't if we can weather this unknown, but how we will weather this unknown together. So on this meaningful morn, we mourn and remend, like light we can't be broken, even when we bend as one. We will defeat both despair and disease. We stand with healthcare heroes and all employees, with families, libraries, waiters, schools, artists, businesses, restaurants, and hospitals hit hardest. We ignite, not in the light, but in lack thereof. For it is in loss that we truly learn to love. In this chaos, we will discover clarity. In suffering, we must find solidarity for its or grief that gives us or gratitude, shows us how to find hope if we ever shall lose it. So ensure that this ache wasn't endured in vain. Do not ignore the pain. Give it purpose. Use it. Read children's books. Dance alone to DJ music. Know that this distance will make our hearts grow fonder from a wave of woes or worlds will emerge stronger. We'll observe how the burdens braved by human kind are also the moments that make us humans kinds. Let each dawn find us courageous, brought closer, heating the light before the fight is over. When this ends, we'll smile sweetly, finally seeing, in testing times, we became the best of beings.
I should have clarified that she was actually referring to the pandemic fairly early on and trying to be positive and optimistic in unknown-changing times. So she was speaking to trying to stay healthy and trying to stay mentally sane in the era of the pandemic. So I should have specified that. If you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance at this time, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, literate, and just for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. If I can now have an approval of our agenda, our motion for approval of the agenda. Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the agenda for the January 26, 2021 regular board meeting of the Richland Two School Board of Trustees.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins. Is there, or I'm sorry, by Dr. Holmes. Is there any, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
Once again, I just, I'd like about every quarter to say, you know, why I don't support the agenda. And it's because we have what I find to be an unnecessary vote for the item 9.1, the draft agenda items. Four of the things, the breach of contract litigation, capital improvements, and the workshop opportunity learning gap were, you know, four things excluded last month. And I do realize that we need to give you all the leeway to, you know, do the agenda. But our policy does say that the board only needs to approve the final agenda. And with that, too, I would just like, for the record, to state as a board member, I would like workshop information to stay at the workshop and board meetings to be board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? With that, we'll have the vote. Zalina, who are we waiting on? Dr. Elkins, are you there? Are you getting the pop-up?
I did not receive a pop-up, but my vote is yes.
All right, thank you. Dr. Elkins, if you can refresh your screen to make sure that you're actually logged into the meeting.
Yes, I did that twice, but I'll try it more times.
Okay, thank you. All right, motion passes six to one. With that, we'll move on to item five, consent agenda. If I can have a motion. Ms. Mackey.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Holmes. Is there any discussion? No discussion, we'll have the vote.
Yes, for me.
Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to public participation, and we have no one signed up for public participation at this time. So we will move on to item seven dot one, executive session items. If I can have a motion on item seven dot one. Yes, Ms. Agostini.
All right, thank you. I move to approve student admission request into the district's adult edu, excuse me, education program for student one.
All right, motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote.
Yes, for me.
Motion passes seven zero. Item seven dot two, if I can have a motion on breach of contract.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I move to direct the administration to make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education regarding one professional employee who breached their employment contract with the district.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second? Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
What is the time expectation after notification from an employee for a replacement teacher to be found?
Ms. Agostini, could you repeat that question for me again, please?
Sure. I'm just wondering, what the time expectation? When a teacher gives us notification that they no longer want to work and break their contract, what would be the permissible amount of time to find, for the district to find a replacement? Or what are the guidelines? What are the employees told?
The guidelines that employees, that are shared with employees, that employees will be released from their contract, particularly certified teaching personnel will be released from their contract pending a suitable replacement, pending finding a suitable replacement.
But so there's no timeline, like a 30-day notification?
It could, it could be anywhere between two weeks, two, four weeks, six weeks. But we do everything that we can as a school district to try to find a suitable replacement for that, for that teacher in order to allow them to be released from their contractual obligations and agreements.
All right, and did this employee request any accommodations from us?
I can't speak specifically to this employee situation, but I can speak in general terms that we have been granting and working with employees on an individual basis to grant any accommodations if they have been requested. If an employee has requested an ADA accommodations, there's multiple steps that we've gone through since the start of school and the initial, the initial request that came in from employees from around the district. As you remember, we've had quite a few ADA accommodations in the district. And so as a result of that, we have put in an additional step. Students, employee may be denied based on the lack of information that may be provided or the fact that they didn't provide information altogether. They can appeal that decision. That decision then goes to our Human Resources Department for them to review. If it is a medical condition, we have brought in consultation from medical professionals who helps review those cases as well as a committee. They then submit that information to me, and then I'll make a final decision on whether or not to grant the accommodations that are requested. So if an employee requests an accommodation, we've done all that we can to try to find some common ground to allow that employee to return back to work or to flat out grant, or to grant the accommodation. And in some cases, we have been able to do that.
Okay, so this said that the employee didn't request any reasonable accommodations. So that would mean to say that they didn't request any accommodations?
And in a situation like this, if we send this information forward to the State Department of Education for their consideration or the State Board of Education for their consideration on whether or not to breach the contract of this employee, I am trying to speak in general terms and not speak very specific about this employee or whether or not they requested one. So I'm speaking in a general form, said if they request an accommodation, we've worked to do so. If they did not request an accommodation, then accommodations would not have been reviewed by the administration, and therefore, we would move forward with the next, the next steps in the procedure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other discussion? With no further discussion, we'll have the vote. Oh, yeah, okay. Six yes, one abstain. Okay. So motion passes. Item seven dot three is not necessary. Item eight dot one, Superintendent's Highlights, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Chair and the members of the board, again, thank you for the opportunity to provide you with information from the Superintendent's Highlights to our visiting members of community members in the audience and those of you who are viewing this board meeting via live stream. Tonight, my highlights will begin with important information about the 2021-2022 school year. So let's start with school choice. The district is accepting applications for choice for the 21-22 school year. Applications will be available online through 5:00 PM on Wednesday, January the 27th. Families living in Richland Two attended zones have the opportunity to apply for entry into magnet programs, schools other than their residential zone school, known as expanded choice, and the R2 Virtual School, formerly known as the R2 E-School. For the 21-22 school year, the district will offer virtual learning via the R2 Virtual School. At this time, the R2 Virtual School will be the only virtual learning option for next year. Interested families should apply online at richland2.org/choice. 4K applications. Applications for the Richland Two 4K program will be open soon. Please visit the district's website and apply for the Richland Two Child Development Program from February the 1st to March 26th. Now, I'm pleased to tell you about several awards and honors that are, that we are celebrating in Richland Two. Let's start with AP Computer Science Award. Blythewood and Ridgeview High Schools are being recognized by the College Board for their work to close the gender equity gap in computer science. They will receive the AP Computer Science Principles Female Diversity Award. Blythewood and Ridgeview are among only 831 schools nationwide to be recognized for closing the gender gap and expanding young women's access to computer science coursework in AP Computer Science Principles during the 2019-2020 school year. Stock market game winners. A group of Bridge Creek Elementary students are off to a great start in learning how to invest in the stock market. 14 4th and 5th grade students, led by their facilitator, Stephen Bidwell, participated in the South Carolina Economics Fall South Carolina Stock Market Game and won. Two of Bidwell's teams finished in the top three. Bridge Creek's Diamond Team, with members Jada Mobley and Christopher Galdo, who are 4th graders, won first place in the competition. Their investments increased by more than $23,000. I need to find out, get them on board early. The Pokemon Traders, whose members of Lucas Curry and Elijah Kendrick, who are also 4th graders, finished in 3rd place. Now, you all are familiar with the Samsung semifinalists. The Richland Two Institute of Innovation, R2I2 Student Center, is a semifinalist in the 11th Annual Samsung Solve for Tomorrow's Contest, a $2 million nationwide competition that encourages 6th through 12th grade students to creatively use STEM, the science, technology, engineering, and math skills to solve a community challenge. Only 75 schools across the country were selected as a semifinalist, and R2I2 is one of them. R2I2 was chosen based on the creative proposals submitted by teachers Kirsten Bullington, Robin Jones, and Nick Jones to address contact tracing in schools during the COVID-19 pandemic, applying STEM skills learned in their classrooms. Students from their classes will collaborate on the project. This is the fourth time in five years that R2I2 has represented South Carolina in the Samsung Solve for Tomorrow competition. I'm humbled by the recognition from K-12 Dive of our diversity and inclusion work here in Richland School District Two. K-12 Dive, a publication covering education news, placed me on their Superintendent's to Watch for 2021 list among three other superintendents nationwide. And I'm so humbled by that recognition. And it is a big, big part of what we do here in Richland School District Two. And as I shared with the publishers of that article, it is a representation of the work of the district, not necessarily the work of the superintendent. So I'm so humble and appreciative of all of, for this district recognition. To conclude tonight's highlights, I wanted to briefly speak on the importance of honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. This past Monday, the nation celebrated the birth and life of civil rights leader, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., or two Mondays ago. Dr. King's struggle and fight for equality remains our fight and struggle today. I believe there is no more room left in the bleachers of neutrality. We all have, we all have to play our position and make plays to advance the ball down the field of equality, equity, and anti-racism. In his own words, Dr. King committed, said, "Commit yourself to the noble struggle for equal rights. You will make a greater person of yourself, a greater nation of our country, and a finer world to live in." Thank you for the opportunity to share the Superintendent's Highlights. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Board members, any questions or comments on the highlights? Dr. Holmes.
I'd just like to say congratulations, Dr. Davis. That is a high achievement.
Thank you.
Really proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much. And Dr. Davis, next item, workshop on the opportunity learning gap.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, tonight, we are providing you with an opportunity for workshop for the opportunity and learning gap. And we have our Assistant Superintendent for Academics, Dr. James Anne Shealy, who will lead us through this activity for, at tonight's board meeting, along with her team. Dr. Shealy.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Mr. Manning, members of the board, Dr. Davis. It's our honor to share with you our learning together that we've been taking this walkthrough since October. I want you to go back with me for just a few minutes. James Anne is five years old, and she's sitting on the front porch playing with a little boy she doesn't know. Of course, James Anne has drug everything that she needs to play school because that's what James Anne does. So we're sitting on the front porch, and I pull out my crayons. And I remember to this day that this little boy had no clue what to do with the crayons, how to hold them, or what he used the coloring book for. No clue. You may wonder, well, why is James Anne on the front porch of a stranger's home? Well, it's because my mom was inside. My mom had taught school for 43 years, and that's just what we did. We went around to people who needed us, who needed her. She taught them to read. She taught them to know where to sign their name. She taught them how to sign their name. Sometimes we didn't travel. Sometimes that help came from a soft knock on the door. That memory should take you back to when Dr. Helen Grant shared with us a couple of years ago the fact that her dad was saving money for a car and instead chose to use that money for a school bus or for a bus so that he could take children in their community to school. People who gave opportunities to children who didn't have opportunities. They didn't expect any recognition. They didn't know 50, 60 years later that we would be having this conversation today. And fast forward, I go to a story that Dr. Davis shares, where he was taking children to the Cogurt Center. He was serving as a principal in a nearby district. And the children started saying, "Dr. Davis, Dr. Davis, what is this? What is this?" And Dr. Davis said, "This is the University of South Carolina. Y'all live five miles away from here. You've never seen here." Guess what happened? Dr. Davis stopped the bus, took them on a very quick tour of the horseshoe so they could experience what it felt like to be on a college campus. So when Dr. Davis called me in October and asked if I would chair the Opportunity Learning Task Force, without hesitation, I said, "Yes, sir." And without hesitation, I picked up the phone, and I called Dr. Sean Suber. And I said, "Dr. Suber, would you co-chair this work with me?" And he said, "Lady, I'd be happy to. That is my passion." So thus, we began our work together. You'll see on this slide, members of our task force. We started first with members from our district who we knew were passionate about this kind of work. Then out of respect for our principals, we waited, waited until after November 4th, after we were back to school face-to-face, to add them to our task force. We've also gathered input from our faculty advisory council through a presentation and through their input. Now, as we begin to settle down, hopefully very soon with COVID, we will continue to add people to our task force. People from all walks of life, classified, certified teachers, with the vision finally being to add members of our community, again, from all walks of life. Tonight, Dr. Arnold will share our why, as you can see from our agenda. Mr. Nathan O'Neil will take you on a learning opportunity. And then Mr. Robert Jackson will talk with you about our next steps and our how. So as I step away to make room for Dr. Arnold, I just want to share with you that as you envision this work gap, tonight, rather than looking at it this way, I'd like for you to think of it in terms of us standing in the gap together with Dr. Grant's dad, with my mom, and continuing with all of you, with us, hand in hand, arm in arm, linked together to provide opportunities for all of our students. And all really does mean all. So that when we provide those opportunities and our kids and our children are experiencing their pathways to passion, we can stand in that gap saying and having that mindset of, "Where have you been? Where have you been? We've needed you." Thank you, Dr. Arnold.
Chairman Manning, members of the board, Dr. Davis. It's a pleasure to be here again tonight, share some information with you. So just a little bit about our purpose. Our work is to identify knowledge opportunity gaps for students in Richland Two. And then our goal is to provide strategies to address barriers to ensure that all students are afforded the opportunity through access to maximize their gifts and talents as they pursue their pathways to purpose.
Dr. Arnold?
Yes.
I just want a quick process question so that we give you all the right opportunity for flow. And since this is a workshop, I assume that as board members have questions, we should ask them at the time that the question arises and not wait till the end?
Yes.
Is that, okay. I just, sorry, I wanted to address that while we were... Sorry to interrupt your flow already. Thank you. Yeah.
Ah, thank you. They have a little cheat screen for me down here. That's handy. You can see here are three essential questions. The assumptions and barriers about student success for their families, excuse me, their families and communities exist that limit knowledge and opportunities within our system. How can we create an educational system that incorporates an environment of high expectations, provides access, and creates knowledge opportunities for all? And then finally, how can knowledge opportunities and anti-deficit strategies be utilized to better address and provide equitable access to every student in our schools? So I want to begin with sharing some data with you. In order to understand where knowledge opportunity gaps may exist, we analyzed the available achievement data, including ACT, SAT, AP, Ready to Work, as well as our graduation rates for the last three years. We looked for gaps by ethnicity, gender, and poverty. And while we did find very minimal gaps by gender, we found more substantial gaps and therefore focused on those gaps in ethnicity and gender and the intersection of the two. So for some background, of the approximately 28,000 students in Richland School District Two, there are about 16,000, or 56%, who have been identified as pupils in poverty. Now, another reminder, pupils in poverty are students who qualify for Medicaid, Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, who are homeless, transi- who are homeless, transient, or in foster care. So we're not just looking at free and reduced lunch. Within the district, we have approximately seventeen thousand Black or African-American students currently enrolled, and we find that sixty-six percent of those students are identified as pupils in poverty. And additionally, if we look at the sixteen thousand-plus students who are identified as pupils in poverty, we find that seventy-one percent of those students are Black or African-American. So what this means is that we have more than half of our students in poverty, and a substantial percentage of those students are Black or African-American. We'll begin the assessment data review with the ACT. And here we have the percent of test administrations that resulted in a composite score of twenty or higher by ethnicity and poverty status. As you can see, there are some significant gaps. For example, fifty-two percent of ACT test administrations taken by students of more than one ethnicity, who are not in poverty, resulted in a score of twenty or higher. But only twenty-two percent of students, excuse me, test administration taken by students of multiple ethnicities who are in poverty resulted in a score of twenty or higher. That's a thirty-point difference. Now, please note that on these graphs, I've included American Indian and Alaska Native, as well as Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. But I don't show the percentage of students who scored at these various levels. It's not because we don't have students who scored at those levels, it's because we have a very small number of those students, and we always mask the results for those students so that we don't re- I'd identify anything that's personally revealing.
Dr. Arnold?
Yes.
I, I want to back up, and I'm sorry.
Sure.
I'm looking at the two slides, the one that says among the Black or African-American in Richland Two, sixty-six are in poverty.
Yes.
And then among the pupils in poverty, seventy-one percent. I'm, I'm not quite sure how, I can't add that up in my head very well, I'm not, not that bright.
Dr. Davis and I had a good discussion about this the other day. So the first number, the sixty-six percent, is if you just look at all Black or African-American students in Richland Two.
Yeah.
Okay? Just that one group, the Black or African-American students in Richland Two. What percentage of those students?
I got you.
Are in poverty.
Boom, okay.
Then the second one, all students in poverty, what percentage of those students are Black or African-American?
I, now I get it, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate that. Ms. Augustine?
And I just want to clarify, so what you're saying is sixty-six percent of the seventeen thousand? Got it?
Yes, ma'am. I didn't want to throw too many numbers, so. Moving to ACT, we see the same pattern repeated. In every ethnicity, once again, the percent of test administrations that resulted in that college-ready score of ten, twenty or higher is lower, substantially lower in some cases, for students in poverty. The pattern is similar for AP with one exception. The Hispanic or Latino pupils in poverty actually had a one percent higher number of test administrations that resulted in a three or higher than Hispanic students not in poverty. That's kind of an outlier. Uh, I looked at the numbers today of the eight thousand or so AP administrations over the last three years, only four hundred were among Hispanic students. So with a smaller number, you get greater variability. Yes?
Sorry. Do we know the percentage of Black and African-Americans that are enrolled in AP classes?
I don't have that with me this evening, but I can certainly get that for you.
Okay, can you provide us with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And, and Dr. Arnold, I'm sorry, I missed, I, I'm not, I missed paying attention to something, I admit it. So explain the yes and no again for me.
Oh. The yes indicates that they are identified as a student in poverty.
Gotcha.
And no, they are not identified as a student in poverty.
Okay, that's what I was thinking about.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, I'm sorry. I'm a poor student. Thank you.
Again, the pattern continues with our Ready to Work Assessment. And then moving away from the assessments and looking at graduation rates over the last three years, uh, the pattern is still present, though not quite as, as, uh, well, it's to a lesser degree, but it is still there. So again, it seems that poverty is the issue at play. And if there are no more questions at the moment, I will be happy to turn it over to Nathan O'Neil.
I do have one question regarding...
Yes, ma'am.
On, okay. Yeah, first of all, I want to just say to Dr. Shealy and Dr. Suber, who's happy to work with you, and, and the myriad people on this, on this, maybe this is, uh, this is very helpful information, your, your opening story, um, I can relate. I appreciate that, and I'm thanking you all, thank you all for taking the time to do this at a board meeting where we have opportunity for more people to hear this information than we would if it were, you know, a separate, um, standalone workshop. So thank you for that. Quick question, I'm looking at the data for high school and the task force members, and I know you said that it's going to grow, never mind. Robert Jackson, okay, I was looking to see if you had high school people as well for the high school data and for that feedback, but I didn't, I didn't see Mr. Jackson's name there, so that's all. Just looking to see for like the SAT, ACT, and AP, the deep dive for those, um, concerns, not just the data, if you had high school folks at the table too, but I didn't see Mr. Jackson's name initially, so.
Yes, ma'am, and I would point out that some of our other assessments that we would typically review every year, SC Ready, SC Pass.
Yeah.
We don't have an administration from the previous year to con- to include, so that's, that's why we went with what we did have available to us.
Okay, and I, I may have more questions as we go along, but I just thank you all for this information. It is, it is extremely important to present this at a board meeting, I can't thank you all enough for that. I appreciate it.
Dr. Arnold?
Yes, ma'am.
I do have one other question too. Along with the AP classes, is there a way to provide us a list with the higher-level classes, like the higher-level math classes and the higher-level, um, English classes? Because that would probably have something, some correlation with why we're seeing a, a big gap in the SAT scores and things of that nature, the number of students that we have of the races or in those particular higher-level classes. Because they would need those classes to be able to score higher on some of these tests. Is there a way to break that down?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We can identify the students participating in advanced courses or honors level courses and provide that to you.
Okay, please do, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you, Dr. Arnold.
Mr. Chair? I have one more request, I was wondering if we could just get, and, and I love that it's been broken down, but just a comprehensive of all of these, ju- that have poverty and not poverty? Just a total?
Yes, ma'am.
Graph to compare with that as well, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I may ask, the, with the amount of information that's being requested at this time, if we could give some sort of condensed or an opportunity to collaborate with board members to get that information to you, to then get that to us so that we can get the information? I want to make sure that we don't miss anything, um, and so we're getting information that's being asked. So if, if you wouldn't mind having a board member send that information to you so that we can have an opportunity to sit down with staff and make sure that in our staff meeting, I'm able to share concisely what board members are asking for so we can put that information in a report and get back to the board.
Okay, so I just want to make sure board members...
Or, or, or they can, I, as apologized, or if you don't mind, they can send that information to Mrs. McDaniels, and she can col- she can collect that information and then share that information with staff, and then we'll, we'll make sure that we provide that information.
So y'all just make sure the questions, Southern, y'all, make sure the questions that you ask, if you can please document those and then forward those on to, uh, Zalina, if you don't mind just including me so I'm aware of the volume of the questions that are being asked. And, uh, and then Zalina, Dr. Davis, and myself will work together to make sure we get comprehensive answers back to the board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Chairman Manning, board members, Dr. Davis. My name is Nathan O'Neil, and I work with Innovation in the District, and it's my pleasure tonight to give us a chance to sort of personalize this data that you've seen. We have designed an activity that you'll find all the things you need on your desk, on your table. Uh, the first thing is, you will find a game board that looks like this, a little ticker tape. And you also see a little card, which is your game piece, which you'll put on the far right-hand side. And this is going to be your student for this evening. Each of you has a student, you'll see on the cardstock paper that's also there in front of you, a page or two that has some scenarios, ten scenarios, S one through ten should be listed there. And so what we'll do tonight is have a chance to walk in the shoes of some of our students, fictionalized students, of course, but students to help us sort of flesh out this data, personalize it to build more empathy. We're making the assumption that all these students, as we're going to join them in the winter of their eighth-grade year, are at the same level of proficiency with some varied outcomes depending on their situations. Uh, each game board piece, you'll see when you have your piece and you have your game board at your desk. Uh, Dr. Arnold, uh, featured back on the Clear Touch panel, which is a, a really great investment, our district has moved, and all of our classrooms now have these very cool pieces of equipment, so we're using it tonight. He's going to like kind of let you guys see how everyone else is moving across their game board because of COVID, we don't want everybody to be moving around and things like that. So he'll be able to show us that as we go along. And so please, uh, follow along with your prompts, which will tell you to stay put, move backwards, move forwards. Uh, and as we go through the activity, there'll be ten prompts that I'll read, and you'll follow along. Does anybody have any questions before we start?
I do, do we start on the right side or the left side of the?
Excuse me.
Little journey?
Yeah, so start off on the left side.
Okay.
And then move across to the right side. So as you go along through the activity.
And the, the left side is the white side?
Uh, it doesn't matter, either one is fine. However you oriented it is fine.
I'm sorry, I will find a way to screw it up.
Okay, and here's my, do we start off the board or on the first square?
Yeah, start right there in that first square.
Okay.
And Dr. Elkins Johnson, you're, you're joining with us, uh, by phone. She's got her document there, so she'll be reading along. Afterwards, we'll have a chance to reflect on, uh, your, this activity. Okay, so here we are. Look for S one, that's our first scenario. So here we are, it is choice and magnet season, the winter of your eighth-grade year. How will you play out, how will this play out for you? So find your card, read the response, and then do as it says. All right, scenario two. Your eighth-grade teacher is providing input for recommendations for your ninth-grade counselor, and they're assigning your ELA and math courses. You all scored in the seventy-eighth percentile for math and ELA, which is just below the cutoff of eightieth percentile to get into honors or advanced-level work. What will they decide for your track in high school? So that's scenario two. All right, scenario three. You'd like to join an extracurricular activity or a sport as a freshman that lets your non-academic talents shine and gives you some good connections with faculty and other students. Where will you end up? Scenario three. Scenario four. It's time to sign up for courses as a tenth grader. So it's time for you to have your IGP meeting, Individual Graduation Plan Meeting, with your counselor to work out your classes and plan for next year with your counselor. Your high school teachers have entered their recommendations. What will be the options for you as a sophomore? That's scenario four. Scenario five. There are several CATE, which is Career and Technology Education Courses and Related Arts Classes, that you've heard about through the grapevine that you'd like to take next year as a tenth grader. Will you get into the ones that you want? That's scenario five. Scenario six. You have a lot of projects during your sophomore and junior years, which requires you to do significant work outside of school hours. Will your home situation and internet connectivity work out for you? That's scenario six. Scenario seven. As an eleventh grader, you need to take the ACT or SAT to gain entrance into the college of your choice. Which will you choose, and how will this support your future goals? That's S seven. Scenario eight. You're taking US History as a junior to satisfy your graduation requirements. This course has an end-of-course test that's considered to be the toughest. What will your class be like? How will it be taught? And will you find it engaging? That's scenario eight. All right, scenario nine. It's getting towards your senior year, and it's time to apply to colleges and/or to prepare for entering the world of work. What opportunities will you have? And will you get connected to where you want to be on your pathway to purpose? Scenario nine. And finally, congratulations, students, you have graduated. You might find a little mortarboard there on your table too, if you, if you happen to find it, you can put it on your student's picture if you'd like, for dramatic effect. So reflect on the past, look towards the future, then toss that mortarboard into the air. The rest of your life after high school in Richland Two awaits you. And that's scenario ten. All right, so as a result of that activity, you could see it happening as we went along, you could see on your game board for your individual student, uh, some students, although we all graduated, uh, made it much farther, uh, with our opportunities, their learning, with their knowledge. And so what we want to do now is give you guys just a chance to sort of reflect on this activity. We'll start with Ms. Augustine, just kind of move right around the, around the, uh, semicircle here, and then we'll, we'll get Ms. Elkins on the phone at the end. Um, what I'd like you to do is just maybe if you'd love to share something, just kind of initial impact or initial thoughts or feelings about the activity. Um, and then I want you to sort of address two things. The first one is, what is an example of a person or a program that was there for you that helped you to bridge a gap that you may have had? So that gave you a possibility of positive? And then the other thing would be, uh, consider one of the gaps that you still had. Uh, there may have been many, but choose one that you feel like was the most, uh, cogent and share that one. So tell us really quickly your thoughts. Tell us one positive of a person or program that supported you, then tell us one negative, uh, that a gap that's... uh, that a gap that still remained for you as a student. Ms. Agostini, can we start with you?
Well, but you're putting me on the spot. I'm a processor. But, um, okay, so an example of a person or a program that helped me, I will say, and I've talked about him a number of times, but his name is Mr. Craig Oldham, and he was my high school coach because he was the first person that really believed in me and made me believe in myself in terms of helping set goals and learning that if I worked really, really hard, I could attain, you know, whatever I wanted to achieve.
Nice. And then for, for the student that you sort of walked in the footsteps of here, was there something that, was there some, uh, way that they, uh, were supported and helped along the process as well?
Um, well, can I tell who I was?
Yes, certainly. Please, yes, please also do that.
So I was Dion, and I think he had several setbacks, um, in his life. And one, it didn't seem so much, well, there were many. It didn't seem like his teachers really believed in him. And I didn't see a lot of parental involvement. His positive was he had a great football coach who did believe in him and sort, it was a very similar story to mine, that he, he was more motivated by his athletic coach than he was in the classroom. But the one thing that I feel like is missing from this whole big picture and like from the committee is that where's the guidance counselor? So that, that's my takeaway.
Great, thanks for those thoughts.
If I could insert Dion as the fourth student down for the people who are watching?
Certainly, yes, yes.
It's the fourth row down, so that you know who that is.
Sure. Ms. McFadden?
Yes, so I had Nick. He's the third one from the bottom, the white male. Um, and so one positive thing was is that he had, um, a really cool history teacher when he was in 10th grade, I believe. Um, he had a really good history teacher. He had to get that credit and she liked him and she respected him. And she found alternatives. Nick was someone who liked art. And that goes back to the fourth scenario when he had a counselor that knew that he liked art and was helping him along the way. But that counselor had to go out on FMLA, and so he was put with, um, another counselor who didn't know anything about him. And so that person put him in any class, you know, not knowing kids' art, history, and things like that. So I think that was a negative because that counselor knew that young man and he knew what his goals were early on, but being put into someone else that didn't know him, that kind of messed him up. And then after that happened, everything after that was downfall, 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 until he got into history with a teacher who was willing to help him, who recognized his art and helped him through that.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Maggie?
My student was Brianna. Brianna is the second from the top. Um, and with regard to positives, the, everything. She applied for a magnet. She got in, she was able to get there. With regard to internet access, she had not only reliable internet access, but a parent that could come home during lunch and work with her and make sure that she had, um, the support that she needed. She got all of the classes she wanted, APs and honors, ELA. She did well in all of her classes, got scholarship opportunities early, and graduated with huge, tremendous advantages in life. The only setback that she had was that a teacher was on maternity, maternity leave during one of her classes, and she struggled because she was focusing on some, um, other class, other coursework that was a little more weighty. But the teacher came back from maternity leave and her only setback was having gotten a B minus in that class with regard, as opposed to having excellent grades in all of her others. So she had every advantage afforded to her and was able to capitalize on those advantages.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Manning?
So my student was Mario. Uh, Mario is the one all the way at the bottom. So he basically, um, I think on my screen, he got one off a start at the end. Huge struggle, English as a second language student, parents, parents don't speak, uh, fluent English at all. And so there were huge barriers for him regarding, uh, understanding access, what, what was available, how to get access to it, the technical ability to get access to those things. So he, he struggled with many different layers of issues throughout his career. Uh, one of the bright spots, it appears ESOL, um, provided opportunities for him. One, athletically, he was very inclined and so got him involved in athletics, which is an area where he did excel, one of the bright spots of his time in school. Also ESOL got him and his other, uh, other family members access to the KJET, um, internet so that they had a little bit better access than they normally would have. But, um, lack of, overall, one of the big drawbacks was because of the language barrier. It was just not understanding or being aware of the opportunities, how to get access to it. And then because of the language, even those times he did, he was not able to fully take advantage of it. Um, and then of course, the, the big drawback for him at the very end was being a student who though graduated, um, was not a, uh, the citizen of the US, um, through his family, and therefore he had no opportunities in South Carolina to further his college education. And so he, he graduated with no opportunities in the state. So he had a, he had a tough haul.
Yeah, sorry, sir. We, we thought you could take it.
I, I could take it. I feel bad for him. I mean, this dude's working like really hard. He's, he's trying super hard and getting, getting nowhere fast. I mean, it, it definitely, uh, I, I could see where it's frustrating, but the good news for him is he, he struggled, but he did not get in any kind of trouble. So he didn't have any kind of, you know, he really worked hard, put it in, didn't have any, uh, a, any outside issues that pulled him further down. But still, for all his effort, he didn't get very far. And that, I imagine, is extremely frustrating.
Yeah. Thanks for those thoughts. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Dr. Caution Parker?
Okay, my student was, um, was Lily. Lily had it all. Had all of the advantages, had the support at home, um, outstanding, involved parents, uh, was in advanced classes. Um, um, her history teacher was very much involved and had a big influence on her. Uh, she just had it all, opportunities, all the experience, everything. The drawback was that the, uh, there's a gap with the CATE programs. And, and the, the, the way I could put this is that she's missed a real world opportunity, a real world opportunity. It's not going to hurt her. She's going to go on through, might come back up later on in life, but, um, but she missed that opportunity.
Thank you very much.
She did great. Everything going forward.
Dr. Holmes?
Okay, my student was Gwen, Lord Poor La Gwen.
Second from the bottom there.
Gwen was exactly the opposite of Dr. Caution Parker's student. Um, first of all, Gwen did have an interest. The positive was she did start out wanting to be in a magnet program, but because she didn't have any help at home, she missed the cutoff and all that sort of thing. So she was denied the magnet program, which would have probably piqued her interest to learn. That's the first thing. And then the other thing was the teacher expectation. Poor La Gwen, because she wasn't the scholarly student that they thought that she was, the teachers didn't have any expectations for her and basically said that she was not college material. And that should never be a call that a teacher should make upon a child because just because a child starts off slow does not necessarily mean that they're not college material. So that's, that was the next thing that happened to her. The other thing that we talked about tonight, which is the basis of why we're probably doing some of this, is the level of classes that she was assigned. You cannot compete with someone who's taking AP Biology and you're taking, um, not even college prep biology. You're just taking a base course with someone who's taking AP course. You're already two steps behind those particular students. So exposure and the thing about that is, is that she may be able to have taken those courses with the exposure and the assistance and the help. It's not always the one that wins the race fast. It's sometimes the one that wins the race with a little bit of help. The other part was she was denied, she was, again, she was denied the magnet program, again, that she applied for. She had no Wi-Fi at home. It worked sometime, it didn't work sometime. So where she started doing well, then the Wi-Fi started acting up on her. So then she lost ground with that. And then the other one, this is the one that just kills me as a, as a guidance counselor myself, is the missed prerequisites for her to even have the opportunity to attend classes. As a guidance person, that should have never slipped through the cracks. Even if you don't think a student has the, the, the ability, that's not your call. You still have to make sure that they have the prerequisites if they're not on a, say, an IEP track or something like that, because you want to have students that have options. You should never pigeon, I'm going to say this again because that's a big pet peeve of mine. You should never pigeonhole a student by saying, well, he's not going to college anyway. You don't know what they're going to do. Give them the prerequisites, give them the opportunity, give them the assistance, and then let them do and see where they're going to go. That is not a school person's call because we all know we have success stories, a success story of students who started off slow or started off a little disadvantaged. And, and here's, I, I gotta say this. And the biggest thing is it may not be that they're actually slow, but exposure is key. Again, you cannot compete with students who have been given the material to be advanced if you have never even seen the material. Gwen had a lot of pitfalls and she would have needed some help, but Gwen should have also have been given some assistance because she has potential, which is what all students and everybody, if you're going to teach, you need to see every student as a student that has potential. It's not your call. That's a pet peeve. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good words, good words. And now there in phone landia with Kenny, who's the third student up from the top there. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, this is such an awesome program. And not only that, I really, um, enjoyed being Kenny. Kenny was one of those students who was, um, well-liked by his peers, by his teachers, and actually by his family. Kenny was smart enough to be a part of the magnet program. However, he had a barrier. His parents did not have transportation to get him back and forth. But his teachers, and that's the key point, and we have so many of these teachers in Richland School District 2, but his teachers saw his potential. Kenny was extremely smart and extremely wise. So with that, his teachers saw the opportunity to still advance Kenny. With that, they allowed him to take, um, CP classes. His school counselor also knows that he's ready for honors. They placed him in honors classes as well. They saw more potential in Kenny. They offered him to join JROTC. Kenny was just one of those kids that was determined to make it to the very next level. And he had those teachers like we have in Richland District 2, who was determined to be there to see the best in everyone. So Kenny was just actually a success story because although he had barriers like transportation, he didn't get places, his teachers and counselors saw that, they still made accommodations for that. Even when he had to perform doing, um, work, his internet service was not on in his home. He had a family member who lived two blocks away, so he could walk to their house and make sure that he maintained his great, um, GPA. So Kenny was just an awesome student, was awesome and fabulous teacher. And of course, he's a success story because he went on to college and his family and his friends still were cheerleaders for him.
All right, thank you very much. I very much appreciate your cooperation and participation in the activity this evening. I am now going to pass it off to the human crescendo principal, Robert Jackson.
Again, and Dr. Dr. Elkins, if you can, um, we're getting a little bit of feedback from you. I don't know if you have some other audio in the background or if we're on speakerphone or whatever, but, uh, if you can work on that. Thank you.
Chairman Manning, members of the board, Dr. Davis and members of the cabinet. First of all, thank you for allowing us to be able to share this information with you tonight. I tried to time my arrival so that I got here at the right time so that Libby can do her, her stuff. But I do want to talk a little bit about opportunity gaps that continue to exist. No matter how many scenarios we go through, we have to understand that these issues are absolutely prevalent and they walk up and down the hallways of every single school in Richland School District 2, as well as other systems around the country. These gaps, whether or not they are expectations gaps, whether or not they are opportunity gaps, whether or not they are access gaps, they create issues for us to be able to move forward as a school system until we intentionally decide that we are going to do something about them. So moving away from the gaps into a land of solution is where we want to be. It is the work that practitioners like myself and the colleagues that join us in doing the heavy lifting each and every day are committed to doing. And so let's talk a little bit about how we are going to do it. And I want you to think about this through an instructional strategy that we call what, so what, now what? Dr. Shealy, Dr. Arnold talked about the what. So they gave you the foundation. Mr. O'Neill and his amazing engaging strategies talked about the so what. So what happens? Now I have the honor of sharing with you the now what. Now what are we going to do as a committed group of learning partners in Richland 2? Our framework is the Avid College and Career Readiness Framework. And we look at it through the lens of what are we doing instructionally? How are we executing leadership levers? What systems are in place to remove some of these obstacles that Kenny and others are facing? And finally, what culture really supports this and lifts all of this up so that we can ensure that children not only graduate from our school system, but they do so with skills so that they may go on and become you, or you, or you, right? That's what we want and we will not stop until we arrive at that. Let me dig a little bit deeper so I can take you into some of the specifics. The first strategy that we have in place is the absolute insistence upon rigor at every single level of the curriculum. And if you do not know that Nancy Gregory doesn't play, I'm here to tell you tonight that she absolutely does not. It's always a question about are we teaching to the intent of the standard? Are our learning expectations and activities at a level where kids can demonstrate mastery? Are we pushing them harder enough so that they can be successful? Those are the kinds of expectations that we want and push for academically, which is why we spend so much time in classrooms, which is why we ask for so much professional learning opportunity, is to ensure that our teachers have what they need so that they can do what we need them to do. So ultimately, our children can be the greatest benefactors. So insistence upon that high level of rigor where we have craftsmanship and innovation and authenticity and those learning experiences produce tangible products that we can see and experience. The second thing that we do is have an unrelenting drive to break down some of these barriers. I was the student that you had, uh, Mr. Manning, in the presentation that Nate, uh, did with principals, and I still have chills. I actually am seeing a little bit of a therapy behind that session, but we'll, we'll talk about that later. But some of the barriers that were facing that young man should not happen in Richland School District 2. They should not happen in any school district. And so we have to work as a school system to break down those barriers, to provide access, to provide resources, to provide tools, to provide the necessary interventions so that children can be successful. So we are committed as an agency, as an organization, to breaking down those barriers to ensure that those children are able to get, again, make that next step. The third thing we want to do is align the work. And this is where I get exceptionally passionate about the work that we do because I without a doubt believe in Avid and the interventions that students need in order to be successful. I'm a living testimony that when you walk the walk and you commit yourself to the work, you see incredible growth in classrooms, in schools, in data outcomes. And as a result, our children now start to have a fighting chance. So what we are trying to do with our commitment to Avid's framework, to looking at the multi-tiered systems of support and ensuring that at every level, we are pausing to ensure that children have what they need, that we're giving them just that little booster shot that they might be able to benefit from so that they can eventually get into that high level course or access the myriad of opportunities that we offer in Richland 2. And finally, that fourth strategy, which is a powerful strategy, is the advocacy for our students. I grew up in a single parent home, so I know what some of those opportunity gaps feel like and what they limit you in terms of you being able to do. like and what they limit you in terms of you being able to do. And so when we see students in a situation where they need parental situations where parents are involved, where they need opportunities for exposure around campus, where they need just a little bit of extra help, we are able to provide those things by advocating for those students and really concentrating on our schools being able to do the exact same thing in terms of the advocacy for students. So insisting upon rigor, breaking down those barriers, aligning the work, and advocating for students. What separates Richland 2 from our neighboring districts and districts around the country?
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes, Ms. Agastina.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt Mr. Jackson, but it's my understanding we're supposed to ask questions as we go along?
Correct, yeah, if you have questions, yeah.
Yes, and if we could just go back to the last slide, and I love the insist on rigor, but I look at just within my own household and the high expectations and rigorous instruction at all academic levels for all students within each grade. I struggle with this because, and I say this is how it was in our house, the standards were different for each of my kids, but the expectation was the same. So what I get concerned about when we're expecting this high rigorous instruction for all students, realistically, regardless of what it is, they all can't handle the rigor. While I'd like to see them try, in my own household, one of my children was not capable of doing it. And I guess what I'm trying to say is I'd like to have it be, you know, rigorous to the standard of the kid. I get that we're trying to, you know, address this opportunity gap, but I just think that sometimes some of these students were gonna actually completely turn off to education altogether if we expect this high expectation and just don't get them to engage in the activity at all or the learning.
Understood, and valid point. And so my response to that would be we meet students where they are. And so, and we try to take them as far as we can absolutely take them with their abilities and skill sets, but we don't limit those opportunities. We continue to push. And so we are able to find students who might be taking grade level classes and ultimately land them in advanced placement classes. We may take a kid who's in an honors level curriculum, and by the time we are finished, we might have that student taking dual credit opportunities. And so we meet students where they are, but we don't put a ceiling over where they might go. And sometimes that's where those interventions might come in place, sometimes where the additional support comes in, the parent advocacy, et cetera, et cetera. My daughter learned to swim by working with you. And after the first lesson that she had with you, she was terrified. Now, in front of you, she was a champion, I love the water, but when she got home, it was like, oh my God, can I like, can I really do this? And so you found, you found unique ways to connect with her so that she began, she began to love the water, she began to push herself to become a better swimmer. Now I can't get her out of the water, so I need to talk to you about that when I'm finished. But this is where we meet children where they are and take them as far as we can take them. But outstanding question.
Mr. Jackson, just as also as an addition to your response, and I appreciate that response, that was a good question, Ms. Agastina, and I appreciate your response as well. I think it was an appropriate response, and I just wanna add that it's our expectation when we talk about rigor that we wanna make sure that we have clear curriculum and academic goals for every child, for every student. We have clear and high academic expectations and goals for every child. So whether that student is a special education student, or that student is an AP student or an honor student in a specialized program, they have clear expectations and clear curriculum, clear goals for those students, that there's high expectations and, and also the high supports for those students. What the variable is, is time. That's the, that's the variable when it comes to education. The goal has to be the same. The variable is time. And so we place the variable on student learning in schools. And I'm talking about Richland School District 2, I'm talking about schools in general. I had an opportunity as a, as a principal at Spring Valley to create an AP BC calculus class, and we made that class a 90-minute block that was year-long versus a 45-minute scanning that was year-long. So we increased the, increased the time for the students to take the class because they had the ability, they had the expectations were the same, but we needed to increase the time so they can perform and that. So that's not reducing the rigor, that's, that's giving them an opportunity to perform, but everyone can't necessarily run a four-minute mile, but everybody can possibly run a mile if they have the capability of doing it. And so that's the, what we're talking about rigor, the expectation is you need to complete the mile. Now, how long it's gonna take you to complete the mile is gonna be up to us. And how can we help you complete the mile? How do we train you to complete the mile? It's gonna be up to us, but we don't lower the expectation that you can run and complete a mile unless there is some sort of way or something that prohibits you from doing that. And so when we talk about the expectations and we talk about rigor and we talk about having high expect, instruction, high expectations and rigorous instruction for all students, is absolutely right, it's depending on whatever class that they're in, but we wanna see students who are making all As and CP classes taking honors course. We wanna see students who make As and Bs in honors classes ensure that they are taking AP courses, that they're not just simply being limited to those opportunities and insist that they continuously push themselves to be the best versions of themselves, particularly in an academic setting at our schools, and ensuring that we have the opportunity at every school that that can take place. That is, that has to be the expectation for us to make sure we have that opportunity there.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey.
Speaking from, from my experience, I came from a high school, you know, years ago, where the classes were, I say segregated for lack of a better word, by college track, they were called tracks back then, and general. And the opportunities for general track were limited. The rigor wasn't there. We live in a state where the constitution, which was South Carolina constitution with regard to education mandates a minimally adequate education for all students of South Carolina, and we know what that looks like. That's, that's, that's huge chasms of disparity depending on where you are. So what I wanna say is with regard to that, I appreciate some of the initiatives that Dr. Davis has talked about and what you're talking about and having opportunities for rigor there. And for me, rigor means expectation, is setting an expectation and opportunities to excel well beyond minimally adequate, which is what South Carolina mandates, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Jackson, great presentation. But for me, one thing that I, and thank you, Dr. Davis, for saying what you said about the rigor, cuz that's real important. But the other part is, for me, is exposure, exposure. You can have two children who are equally bright, equally bright, but if I've been a child that has been exposed to higher order classes, it doesn't mean that this student who has not been or been assigned to higher order classes can't do what this student does, but they were never given the exposure to the classes to do that. That is key because when you are set in a situation and you have to step up, most students will step up with assistance, help, encouragement. But you can't even compete if you haven't even been exposed to the material. I don't care how bright you are. So we have to make sure that these students are giving the same level of exposure and opportunity to cross over into some of these classes that can get you there. Because you're not going to be able to compete with a student that has taken AP and honor all their life academically, and you haven't. It's because, and it's not because you're less bright, it's you're less exposed. When I was a ninth grade academy coordinator in Calhoun County, one of the things that I wrote the grant for them to have the academy, and one of the things I said that had to be in there had to be exposure. Because like Dr. Davis said, there were kids who hadn't seen the beach. So if you see it on a test, you're looking at a yacht or something like that, you're gonna say a boat, but on the standardized test, you're wrong because you haven't had the same exposure. So, and we gotta stop deciding who gets the exposure. If students wanna try and their parents want them to try, then it shouldn't be solely based on what your past performance on an academic class that you were never even exposed to in the first place. If we're gonna break down some of these gaps, we gotta break down some of this ability to keep a sect of the population here and a sect of the population here. We can't do that. We have to have equal opportunity for exposure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That's certainly some powerful contributions, and you all are exactly right. And so that kinda leads me to how we are different in Richland 2. And I think you know this, Dr. Grant shared with us a few meetings ago about the equity lens. We consider this to be the nucleus of the work that we are engaging in and working through as we eliminate barriers for students in our school system. So this becomes the nucleus of ensuring that not only are we thinking about doing the right things, but we have the right approaches to executing those things. You know, to anchor the work that we are doing, we are utilizing research literature. And I would certainly invite you, if you have not laid your hands on these two texts, I would certainly encourage you to do so. The one on the, on the left is Will to Lead, Skill to Teach. It's by a practitioner by the name of Dr. Anthony Muhammad, was a principal in Detroit in Michigan and went on to do some amazing work in, in the research community. And he has proven strategies for removing barriers to ensure that children are able to achieve at the very highest level. And so I would encourage you and invite you to please get your hands on that text and take a look at it. The second of which is Necessary Endings by Dr. Henry Cloud. These two pieces of literature are informing and guiding the work that we are doing to support Dr. Davis's vision in not only understanding what these gaps are, but mobilizing and executing intentional plans to remove them to ensure that all points of data are reversed based on what you saw earlier, and we are able to produce work products, graduates, that are absolutely living the mission and the vision of Richland 2.
Excuse me, Dr. Davis, if you could help the board put hands on that by giving us copies of his books?
Yes, sir.
Since Mr. Jackson asked, I wanna make sure.
Thank you so much. Don't have any money, so I'm glad you had Dr. Davis.
We'll take care of that for you, Selena McDaniel, if you remind me to make sure we order those books.
So what are our next steps? Let me bring this home so that you can kinda understand this. And so while you may be able to read exactly what's on the slide, I don't want to insult you by reading. And so I wanna speak metaphorically for a second. Obviously, when you know there's a problem, you have to be able to visualize that there is a problem. There's no need turning a blind eye, a deaf ear, or being an ostrich and sticking your head in the sand. That's not gonna serve the students in Richland School District 2 any better. And as policymakers and leaders, we've got to be able to honestly acknowledge the plain and simple truths that are in front of us. The second thing that we have to do is once we realize that a truth is there and we can visualize it, now is time for us to systematically enact upon it. And so we have to remove and dismantle those systems that are holding kids back. Those things that we are doing that are putting students on tracks that we know that are hurting them, we have to find bridges over those tracks to ensure that those students are able to be successful. The third thing that we must do is constantly look at data and make decisions based upon numeric indicators that inform logically what we need to be doing next. And finally, we have to understand what we need to stop doing, period, and change and shift gears and have the courage that it takes to be able to do the right things for the right reasons at the right time to produce the right results. Those are the types of things that we need to do in Richland 2. And when we do it, not only do we have the will, but we most certainly have the skill. So I'm gonna leave you with a quote from one of America's greatest icons in James Baldwin. "And not everything that is faced," he says, "can be changed." But nothing, absolutely nothing, can be changed unless, unless it is faced. So I wanna bring before, I wanna bring before you Dr. James Ann Shealy, I think she has some closing remarks, or you gonna leave me up here under the fire again? And so I do wanna acknowledge, you coming up? Okay, all right. So I do wanna acknowledge some people in the very beginning that are informing this work. I have a lot of colleagues that I have the opportunity to stand here representing. And so I don't want you to think that this is not a large cross-section of people thinking about and committing ourselves to this work. And so from every level, we have leaders and practitioners that are involving themselves in this work to ensure that our children have a bright future. I wanna thank you guys so much for allowing me to share with you some of this work tonight and give me an opportunity to answer some questions. So thank you so much. You got a question for me?
Yeah, you mentioned that you were, is that okay?
Yeah, Ms. Mackey.
You mentioned that you were passionate about this topic. I would never have guessed that you were passionate. Go, go figure. And I know Dr. Shealy probably will have closing remarks, but I just wanna thank the people that, the presenters, dynamic of course, but all the people who work behind the scenes to, to, one of the things that I wrote down is that you can't address an issue until you identify it. Of course, that was part of your presentation, imagine that, you know, great minds thinking alike, all of you all. But thank you for the people who are listed there, the people who are working toward this vision, Dr. Davis, for the folks who are seeing how you're doing, I don't wanna start naming, calling people out because that's when you get in trouble. And I did see that Mark Sims is also another high school, a high school level person, so I apologize for overlooking him early, but just thank you for presenting, I appreciate that very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Jackson? Is it Mr. Jackson or Dr. J? I don't wanna mess that up, man, all right, sorry.
He's working on that.
He's working, I know he's, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm fortune telling for him, already put it out there, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, yep.
I just got a text message as well that the books have been ordered, so, so we were already on top of it, just hadn't, just hadn't gotten in yet.
I just wanna show when we get called to action, we'll follow through.
Yeah.
I'm afraid to put him on the spot, I'm.
Are there any questions from the board? If not, I just had a few statements that I've commented, so I don't wanna make as Mr. Jackson wraps up.
I don't have questions, I mean, I have a few comments if you want me to go ahead and roll along with them. I'm sorry, Dr. Elkins, you said you had something?
Yes, no questions, just a comment, just want to tell the committee that they did an amazing job. I love the way that they were able to break it down for different learning styles and levels. I love the passion and enthusiasm with the presentation, and I think this is something that we should invite parents in, who, well, of course, after COVID, to do activities with them in this manner to show them the different levels and styles that we have. And just wanna say thank you for a job well done and just continue to do the work that you do for our students, our amazing students in Richland 2. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Agastina.
Um, thank you, and I did misunderstand Mr. O'Neil's initial question, so I apologize that. When you said you, I didn't realize you were meaning me as Dion. But, but, and, but I alluded to this before, I've enjoyed the presentation, but the one thing that I would have liked to have seen perhaps, and it sounds like maybe it'll be added, was I think that, you know, the student, or the school guidance counselors would have been extraordinarily beneficial to this committee because they're ultimately the ones that, especially as we were talking about the eighth grader for most of these kids, and, and we've been focusing more to me on the high school scenario, that they're the ones that are instrumental in helping making these decisions and might be, offer a wealth of information to share with the task force.
Absolutely, they'll be coming in next. Thank you. We're being very respectful of making sure that we're not disturbing our schools right now because of the pandemic, but yeah, definitely not just our school counselors, but our social workers as well.
And my, my comments, Dr. Davis, I, you know, as I look through, one, I appreciate the fact that we're using Avid, that we have a known framework, this effect of, and breaking down these barriers, I think it makes it a lot more sustainable when you have a framework to work off of instead of just sort of ad hoc work that's coming together. Of course, we put the Richland 2 lens on it and the focus from Richland 2. A lot of that, Dr. Davis, is definitely your vision. I, I see components in when we have those four items, insist on rigor, break down barriers, et cetera. I see some of the touches that, that you've talked about for a while, out of a two by 11th grade, other specific items that I know were things that you, when you first came in, you, you told the board that those were things you wanted to accomplish and you have, and you've made progress on those amongst many others, but also. But also appreciate the fact that, Dr. Davis, you talk about the fact that it's not just you. It's also this committee and the staff work, and it's also the board support. When I look at some of the things that we've done when we, as a board, when we talk about access to extracurricular activities, and I look at the Fine Arts Center that we'll soon have next to us, which is took board action and board support to make sure we provide those opportunities and focus for students, the pre-K programs that the board has supported and, and some of the support that it's taken there. And, you know, many others, when I, when I look down these four lists, I see a lot of work that's already happened. We have a lot more to do. But I do appreciate the collaborative effort and that we're all pushing together in the same direction to provide, to, to help to begin to close those opportunity gaps, to focus on it beginning. And I see it, it's like a steam train. I mean, it's just gaining traction more and more as we go through the years. So I appreciate the fact, Dr. Davis, that you comment that it's not just you, that it's a team that includes support from the board. And of course, we give you the latitude to do the work that's necessary in the district. And so I, board, I appreciate our effort and focus and passion in allowing this work to happen and, and continue. Not to toot our own horn, but I don't want to lose the idea that that board support is a big component. So I appreciate all of us working together with, with Dr. Davis and the team to, to make this progress.
Well, you can't tackle the opportunity gap, achievement gap, learning gap. You can't tackle equity, inequity, equality. You can't tackle all those, those big heavy lift, those big pillars without a great collaborative spirit between the board, the community, and administration, teachers, and students. It takes all of us to be able to do this work. And when we are not aligned in our efforts to remove these barriers, not aligned in our efforts to provide or insist on rigor for our students, or where we have breakdowns, when we're advocating for our students, or we don't remove barriers, it doesn't allow us to put our students in a position to be global citizens, prepared to lead and excel in their chosen pathways. That is the mission of the school district. It is mission critical. The mission is to put our students in a position to be global leaders who are prepared to lead and excel in whatever pathway they decide to take. And they can be global citizens if we don't have those things in place. So it's absolutely critical for the board and superintendent and administration and the community, parents and students and all of us to remember that is the focus in what we do to work. So I just, you know, again, appreciate having the latitude and the flexibility and most importantly, the support to lead this fine group of educators. Because I, hands down, we have some of the, the most brilliant educators in the state of South Carolina, if not nationally. And, and we are being, we are being recognized for what we do. And that starts at the board level.
And, and I, I tell you, Dr., one of the items that I'm really particularly proud of, especially having the student Mario, the social emotional learning and support. And I look at the number of staff and the access that we've given for that is another area where we've made a lot of gains that I don't necessarily see in other districts. Not to say not all are doing it, but it, it really hit home with my particular student that those are some of the supports that make a huge difference in, in so many students' lives at a real, real level and an impactful level.
Yes, sir.
I'm done.
I wanted to give up the board members an opportunity to comment before I made any final comments. And Dr. Shealy did it. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Yes, sir. Just thank you so much for the opportunity tonight. Special thank you to our task force, for the ones who are on here now and the ones who are yet to come. Appreciate your attention and appreciate everyone who shared tonight. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair and members of the board, I think one of the things I just, I'm sorry, Dr. Holmes, were you gonna say something?
No, I have to say, I appreciate the support.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think one of the things that I wanted to do would just, just provide a little clarity and frame a lens to what we just participated in. And again, thank you all for the opportunity to incorporate this real important workshop into the work that we do. I try to be considerate of your time and not add additional workshops and additional meetings to the board's calendar and utilize when we have space and time to be able to do this very important work of the board, which if you remember is one of the six goals that we talked about was achievement and opportunity gap and closing that gap. And so it is aligned with what, what we discussed this summer. One of the things that I wanted to do, we started this whole conversation out with a discussion about poverty and versus race and ethnicity. And I think it's important for us to remember that students don't get an opportunity to choose whether or not they're going to be born into poverty. And they absolutely don't have an opportunity to choose that they're going to be born in a particular ethnicity or not. That is not a choice that any of our students are, are born, or have at birth. We can't change the construct of their ethnicity. We possibly could change the construct of race if that becomes something that society decides to do, but we won't hold our breath on that. What we can do is put our position, our students in a position to overcome the ills and the challenges of poverty. And so what we were trying to frame for you all was to show, not to show that inherently African-American students are born, African-American students are inherently more academically challenged than any other student population. What we were showing was that students of poverty in our district have a more challenge or a, a challenge when it comes to their academic performance because of the, the issues of poverty. And we wanted to just give you a reference of how much of an impact that is in our district based on the populations of students in our district, so you have an idea. Because most data that you're going to see in your time, in my time, and probably after us will be always talking about the achievement gap from the perspective of black and white. That's how the achievement gap is measured, that's how it's discussed. There's probably very little other discussion about the achievement gap when it comes to any other ethnicity. They speak, they pick the two majority ethnicities in this country and say, there is an achievement gap between black student performance and white student performance. And what we were trying to paint is the real gap occurs as a condition of poverty. And, and, and when, and if they are in poverty, there, this has an impact on their learning or could have an impact on their learning. What we want to share though is I think we have a magnificent opportunity to be promisingly, promisingly disruptive and dispelling all of that and addressing all of that by simply not looking at an achievement gap as the issue because the achievement gap has been around forever. But to look at the opportunity gap, which has an impact on the learning or the knowledge gap. So when there's an opportunity, where are there? How can we provide more learning opportunities for our students? And there are a number of ways that we can provide learning opportunities for our students. Some are in extended programs, like after-school programs that, that will help our students. Some is in exposure, like the examples that Dr. Shealy gave about giving them more opportunity to art, to music, to science, to whatever it may be. Once we can help or shore up the opportunity gap, I feel like we will have an ability to impact the knowledge gap. So they have an opportunity and from that opportunity, they now have a knowledge base that we've provided to them that they're not deficient of compared to a counterpart that may have had that opportunity. You all have heard my example about the beach and how a student or child who has had the opportunity to go to the beach and stand in the water can experience the ocean shelf and, and the erosion, and they can see estuaries firsthand. An opportunity to be in those positions, to be in those places has given them a, now a level of knowledge. So now when they are in class and they're learning, the opportunity, the knowledge now impacts their learning. The connections are greater because of the opportunities that they have been afforded. Now they have a better opportunity, a better chance of doing well when it comes to achievement. Because achievement is just a measure of opportunity, knowledge, and learning. That's what the achievement test is. It, it really measures that. It's not just solely based on the content that has been identified as significant to know for the SAT or the S, or for college readiness. There's a lot of things that impact your college readiness that's not measured. So that's where the focus is for us. We have a wonderful opportunity, I believe, by addressing the opportunity gap, we can then close the learning, the knowledge gap, closing the learning gap, and help our students be more inclined to do well when it comes to any type of measurement through achievement. So we appreciate the opportunity to share this workshop with you, this information with you, and we look forward to working with the board, working with our, our administrators, our teachers, our students, and most importantly, our parents and our community in doing so. I think, just to kind of go back to what was stated earlier, it is going to be imperative that we insist on rigor in our classrooms. It's going to be imperative. And when we insist on rigor, it's about building premier educational programs for all of our students. Our core academic program should be the best it could possibly be. It should be as good as any other program that's out there, our core academic program, that our families should not have to seek specialized unless they choose and they're interested in that, not because they think that the core program is inferior. It's okay to be specialized and I applaud that. I think kids who are interested in, in animals and zoology should have an opportunity to be in a magic. Kids who are interested in research should have an opportunity to be in those programs. Kids who learn better through collaboration should have an opportunity to do that. And I, and I love those programs, applaud that. But what we have to shore up is that there's this notion that our core academic program is inferior to these other programs. And we have to shore those programs up. That program has to be as solid and should be able to stand on its own and be world-class and be premier all by itself. So that way we ensure that all students are having high expectations and rigorous instruction each and every day they step in the classroom to ensure that we break down those barriers and equality and access and make sure that we align that work for those students, that we're measuring their progress and their success ongoingly and to, for all of us to continuously advocate for the best for every single student, regardless where he or she may be, regardless of what school he or she may be in, and regardless of where he or she may come to us academically from the beginning. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely. And Dr. S, I want to comment also. I appreciate, one of the things that I've seen us grow in, you used the word measurement, and I've seen us grow in sophistication with the data, how we look at the data, how we analyze the data. Dr. Arnold, your team, thank you so much for the work that y'all do with that. When you look at businesses that succeed, they stop listening just to their gut and they start figuring out how to measure and make sure that the actions that they take have the impacts that they want them to actually have. And I think education has sometimes lagged behind in that because there is an important component to the, the art of it and the gut. But, Dr. Davis, many times I've heard you say things like AP. We know the data shows that if we can get students in AP courses, even if they make it two, they succeed at a higher rate in college. That's not a gut reaction. That is based off of actual facts to make a difference. And, and so we've seen a lot more transparency in how we measure, that some of the data we looked at tonight. But I think that measurement, I know the formative assessments is on there. You've shown that in the classrooms that are using that, that students succeed at a higher level. So I, I appreciate that it's not all just gut-based, that it's also based off science, measurement, and things that we know have the impacts and the outcomes that we expect to have happen, which I think is important as well. So, thank you. With, with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the draft agenda for February 9th, Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, if you will all turn to your proposed draft agenda for the February 9th, 2021 regular scheduled board meeting, we have right now in the draft agenda, a call to order for executive session at 5:30, which coming out of executive session at 6 o'clock for public session, where we'll have our, in, in our call to order in an executive session. We currently have student appeals and student admission requests into the district's adult education program. As of right now, I have not received a report regarding whether those things will, we actually have an appeal or an admission request, but we'll leave them on this draft agenda for a placeholder. We'll have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. We will ask for the approval of the agenda, followed by the approval of the consent agenda. We'll have our public participation. First public participation at 6.1, at 7.1, we'll have our voting on our executive session items. We have a new business, no action requested, the superintendent's highlights, and then the approval of the agenda for, the approval of the items for the next agenda, followed by, which includes the draft agenda, followed by public participation, number two, board superintendent comments, executive session two if needed, and voting executive session items in that, executive session two if needed and adjourned. I also ask that we add for approval, two additional items. One, the legislative update to be under old business, no action requested. And two, we need to bring a motion to the board regarding the board's approval or a board's approval to move forward with a, a piece of litigation that we discussed in the executive session today.
All right, Dr. Davis, I'd actually like, like us to go ahead and just put the legislative item on as a standing item. And then if we don't have anything, we can just kind of scoop by it. So if we can just make that a, a standing item. So with, with that, we will move on to item 10.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry.
If we can go back to the draft agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
I do have some items I'd love to see added to the draft agenda. And if it's not on this meeting, most definitely on the next meeting. And one is just reflecting on the activity that we just did. It just reminded me of what I'm always talking about, you know, with the K program, we talk about putting students in a position where they're going to be successful. And I love to see that we add to the agenda an opportunity to talk about how we can incorporate and build partnerships with maybe Mittens Tech or some other organizations, where we can get our students into some of these trade programs like HVAC, CNA welding and some of the others. So I would love to see that. I know I've been asking for quite some time. And I'd love to see that on one of the agendas where we can have a conversation about making sure that we, we're talking, but making sure that we follow through on making sure equity is with all of our students because not all students are going to college, and we know that. So let's go ahead and prepare for those who are not so they can have that certificate to move forward in their trade areas and they'll be able to work and take care of their families. That's one item I love to see. The second item that I would love to see on the agenda, as you know, I am not, I'm at the meeting tonight basically for two reasons. One, I am home because I have to quarantine. And two, at the last meeting that I attend, I wanted us to have a discussion about policy ADD. And we know that policy is to reduce and/or prevent the spread of COVID-19. And there are some items in that policy that I love for us to go back and have a discussion on. One for sure is that mentioned certain classes or activities may be granted a limited exception to the requirement at the discretion of the superintendent. And then later it moves down that, you know, face covering may be removed upon staff member or administrative direction within the classroom during special activities outside of the classroom. So I love to have a discussion about that. So we'll know exactly what does that mean? And when the students are doing that, is that something that we're sending home to parents to get permission to allow that? The second thing is I would love to have added to the agenda that we create a policy for face covering, face masks for school board members. As I stated before, I have a fear of that and now I'm sitting home in a quarantine just for that reason. One thing is, we know that face shears can be worn, they are easily out, but we have to remember that they allow droplets and aerosols to be released into the environment. Because of that, I do want us as a board to have a discussion. I love for it to be on the agenda that we talk about what is going to be the policy for face covering slash mask and shears for school board members. Because as I stated, I sent you, Mr. Manning, and Dr. Davis an email stating that I will no longer return face-to-face meetings until we come up with a policy. I want to be safe. I want to make sure our employees and our colleagues are safe. And I most definitely want to make sure my mother is safe, who I take care of and I have to go over and be around. So love to have policy ADD to the agenda added and also love for us to come together as a board to create a policy for face covering, face mask slash shield for board members. And so that, that's all I have. And to that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins. And I'll just, for the record, I want to state that we do have a policy, policy ADD, which addresses face coverings. That's the title of it. On September the, or August the 25th, we, that policy was presented to the board. We were given an opportunity to address any concerns with the policy as it was written. Ms. Agostini asked for changes, which were approved at that time. And at our next meeting on September the 8th, that policy was unanimously voted on by the board. That policy does in fact cover board members as well as staff, and that policy is based off of CDC recommendations, which includes the use of face shields, which meet certain requirements. And so we do have a policy in place that covers board members currently, of which the superintendent, staff, and myself as chair ensure that board members do follow those protocols. And so we do currently have a policy in place that addresses, that addresses that. Now, if you would like to have that policy reviewed.
I would like to have the policy reviewed and revised.
And then we'll have to make a motion to put that on the agenda. If you would like to, at this time, have a motion to have that added to this, to the next agenda or a future agenda, I'll accept a motion from you at this time.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we go back and revise policy ADD, face covering.
Okay, motion's been made by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Agostini. Is there any further discussion? With no discussion, we'll take the vote, all in favor. We'll do a hand vote, all in favor. Raise your right hand, or Dr. Elkins, if you can say yes, since you're on the phone.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so, and Ms. McFadden. So I have three in favor, all against. And we have four against. All right, would you like also?
I have a question. I have a question. I notice that when you and Dr. Davis want to add an item to the agenda, the item is automatically placed on the agenda. But when a board member who's elected by constituents wants to have something on the board, we have to take a vote. And we already know that sometimes the vote is going to be outnumbered, not based on what's in the best interest for our students and safety, but based on people's personal prejudice or likes or dislikes of a person. And as a colleague.
Excuse me, Dr. Elkins, Dr. Elkins, I'm going to call that out of order. I think that is, that is your opinion that it's based off of personal issue? There is no fact in that. And I will not sit here and let you accuse me of taking personal issue with anybody on this board in that way. I think that's, that's.
But as my grandmother would say, a hurt dog will bark, because I never called your name.
That's all right. I'll bark, you're not going to accuse this board of having personal issues and using that when it comes to how we conduct business.
You cannot respect a colleague when they want to have a discussion about something that's important at safety and COVID.
And I do, I do respect you. I mean, that's why I put it out for us to add it to the agenda. You've been given the opportunity for it two times now, and you, the board as a whole had opportunity to weigh in on the policy when it was created, and we did, and we voted unanimously for a face covering policy, which covers board members. Now, if I, I also was going to ask for a motion for Dr. Davis's ask to add items as well. I just, I hadn't gotten there yet. I was, I was requesting, or I was asking you, since you came up with issues you'd like to add, to address those before I got to that. So would you, would you like to also make a motion to add your discussion around career and technology and partnerships on the future?
I would, but I, yes. It doesn't have to be on a next board meeting. It can be on another one for the CATE and career. But I would like to say that I did have this conversation with Dr. Davis, and he was also in agreement that we do need to go back and look at policy ADD, because there are some concerns and some things that he would like to see added or removed.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, to the answer that, that statement, well, one, we have a board meeting for the February 23rd board meeting. We have the CATE report that's going to be a part of the February 23rd board meeting. So that will address the issues with CATE. It relates to the.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
Yes, in relation to the face mask, I, I think I gave you guidance or reference to that you have the ability to bring before the board any discussions that you want to have in regards to this, regards to adding this information to the, adding that discussion to the agenda. I shared with you in our conversation that we are practicing something that is more strict than what the, what the policy already states, that in our schools, we're asking our staff to wear face masks, and we're asking our staff, if they were, to wear face masks, and if they're wearing shields, they, we're asking them to wear, wear face masks, unless they have some sort of medical reason which prevents them from doing so, they can make a recommendation or ask for accommodation to be relieved of that. But we are currently practicing in the schools and in the district, everyone wearing a face mask and not wearing face shields. But the board policy does state that the face shields is, are acceptable if they meet the ADA guidelines of what a face shield is supposed to do, which is to cover the entire face, come down below the chin, the mouth, the nose, and the chin, and around the sides of the face.
All right. With that, I will also take a motion for Dr. Davis's request to add legislative items and to also add a vote on, what, what was it you said about the lawsuit?
It'll be an item that will allow district administration to move forward, joining a lawsuit.
With joining a class action lawsuit. Can I please have a motion for that?
Mr. Chair, do you want one motion or a separate motion?
We can, if you, it's up to you how you want to do it. If you want to do both together, you can.
First of all, I move that the board add a legislative update to future agendas as a standing item.
Motion's been made by Ms. Matthews, seconded, I'm sorry, by Dr. Holmes. Is there any further discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, or Dr. Elkins, if you can say either aye or nay. Aye.
Yeah.
Okay, motion passes seven zero. All right, if I can have another motion for the board to consider class action lawsuit for administration?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
I move that we add to the agenda item an executive session, I presume.
This would actually need to be a voting item, or an executive session voting.
Executive session, and then come out as a voting item, an issue regarding a class action and adding Richland Two to that action.
Okay, motion's been made by Ms. Matthews, seconded by.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Dr. Holmes, okay. My mind and my eyes are not working right. Thank you. By Dr. Holmes, many times. Is there any further discussion? With no discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, Dr. Elkins, if you'll say.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Are there any other items that we would like to see added to the draft agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Agostini.
I would like to see a human resources update added to the agenda, please, based upon just an update on accommodations and where we stand on with the teacher accommodations, other staffing issues. For example, the bus drivers, I continue to see and have for the past couple of months, seen the request on Facebook, wondering if there's a concern there. And then also just looking at the in-district transfers and releases, particularly for this month of January, it seems that it's almost double what it was last year. So I'm interested in hearing, you know, what we can expect and the direction and get any insight as to why these people are leaving and if it's COVID-related. So I'd love to have a human resources update.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that we, we push that to a later board meeting. We can add a human resources update regarding, human resources reported update for a later board meeting, but not for the next board meeting at this time as an additional item. But we can definitely provide an update to the board regarding that. I would like to get more clarification from the board, specifically what the board wants to hear as it relates to the.
May I?
I would like to get from the board more clarity of what the board specifically wants to hear regarding human resources and those, and those questions that Ms. Agostini has.
Dr. Elkins Johnson, and Ms. Agostini, I'll come back to you, but Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yeah, I was just going to make one comment, and I hope people don't take this the wrong way, but if you do, you know you do. It's just amazing to me that when a board member who is the supervisor of the superintendent, when we ask for a request, that we get pushed back to what date that the superintendent wants, instead of allowing us to add our items to the agenda when we say, I'm just puzzled by that. Instead of asking if it's okay, I don't understand that.
Dr. Elkins, I am respectfully requesting, as the employee of the, of the seven-member board, I'm respectfully requesting that from the board, because administration has to do the work, and we already have an agenda already laid out that has additional, has reports already scheduled for that. And so I'm just asking, respectfully asking that that be pushed off. Should the board in its entirety decide that that's not warranted and not give that extension to administration, I will humbly submit the report or have the report prepared for the board. But I'm asking out of respect for my staff and the work that we have going on now. I'm not very clear specifically what reports Ms. Agostini is asking for. She'd ask for multiple things in that one motion that she wants to see the report, how she wants to see the report laid out. Typically, administration is given the autonomy to, to put a report together, but not, it's not specifically receive instructions from one board member of what the report should look like. So I need some clarity to ensure that we're providing the information that the board is requesting. So I, I humbly, I humbly request that the board give us an opportunity to get clarification so that we can provide the report that the board is seeking, not to push back on Ms. Agostini or any board member at that time. But I do have to protect the time and the work of the administration as we're doing, as we're working on other issues as well.
And actually, Dr. Elkins, I was going to follow up on, because Ms. Agostini did ask for a number of items. I think the reason that we started instituting the board voting on agenda items being on the agenda is because we were getting kind of loose requests from the board, that administration was unsure exactly what was being looked for. Sometimes the information came back and it didn't meet the needs of the board for what they requested. Sometimes it was an individual board member and not the full board that wanted it. So I was going to ask if we could have an opportunity for clarity for Dr. Davis on exactly what was going, what's going to be asked for. The other items were very clear as to what was being requested when the agenda item was requested to be put on. And so I, I would.
But I understand, I understand clearly what you're saying, Mr. Manning, but I guess my concern is, we already know that we have a lopsided board right now, where if they don't feel like you as a colleague can get some clarification or a discussion on something, they're going to vote it down. We have not gotten to the level where we respect each other enough to say that if that matter concerns you, then it should concern entire board, and let's have a conversation about it to see which direction we need to move. Because when you have these conversations, something can come out that someone says that makes you go, oh, I didn't really think about that. Maybe we don't need that. But if we shut down the discussions and the conversations, we never know what to come out of it.
So Dr. Elkins, I guess my, my, my comment to that is, we are having a discussion about whether we should add this item or not. And by getting clarity around what the actual request is, that may in fact prompt the other board members to say, yes, I'm also interested in that data. It could also prompt in the opposite direction, where the board looks at a specific request and says, that's information that I am not interested in staff taking time to pull together. And so it's, it's not, it is not a known lopsided board. We have several, we just had several seven oh votes.
It's lopsided when a board member would like to have a discussion or something, and someone takes it personal and don't want to have a discussion instead of showing respect and allowing that discussion to take place.
Dr. Elkins, I appreciate that. We, we've, we've had, you and I and the board, we just had that discussion and a request that we continue the business and not continue on the same issue over and over.
Mr. Chair.
And of course, that's always the answer. We can move forward.
Mr. Chair, the reason why I was specific is because in past times, when I've requested something to be put on the, on the agenda, I've asked, I've been asked for specifics, what, what am I looking for? But one of the things that I do not want to wait on is the approval of the accommodations and the status of those teachers. It's been since the beginning of November since we've heard about that and really not had an update on the status of where we stand with those teachers who requested accommodations and what our numbers are, and do we have qualified teachers in these rooms where teachers have, you know, gone off for one reason or another? So that, that's why I would, like that included on the agenda for next.
If you were to make a specific motion to say an HR item regarding what specifically about, because there's all kinds of accommodations, some that are COVID-related, some that are not, some that are specific to personal HR issues with other health conditions outside of COVID, there's a lot of conditions that would need to be considered under that, under that topic.
Well, I'd like to know regarding the COVID status specifically.
Okay, so you're.
Again, Mr. Manning, I, I am asking respectfully, I, I think we can accommodate any request that is the, in the purview of the board, I believe, an HR update regarding where we stand as relates to COVID and, and teacher accommodations requests and how many were met, and those status can be provided. However, I'm asking that that's not an item that's placed on this upcoming board meeting to give my staff an opportunity.
I'm going to, as board chair, I'm going to make the decision, because I do have that capability, to not put it on this meeting. Ms. Agostini, if you could send in writing, there are specific items you want to have addressed to Dr. Davis and myself, and as we put future agendas together, we will look at how that fits in HR and what we need to bring back to the board for a vote, we will.
Mr. Chair, every time I do that, my requests get denied. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, we will now move on to the next item, which is voting on the, the agenda with the, with the items that we added per vote. So that would be Dr. Davis's request for litigation, the request for, or not, for the litigation issue, and the request for legislative issues were both addressed and approved. So I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda with those items.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
I move to approve the draft agenda items for the February 9th, 2021 board meeting.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Ms. Matthews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll now take the vote. You can, do you still have your computer up?
It's dying.
Okay, so Ms., Dr. Holmes is a yes. Dr. Holmes, if you'll please state that.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes six yes, one no. Next, we have seconded public participation, which there's no one signed up. And board and superintendent comments, board appreciation. I guess Libby, Dr. Davis.
Sir, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Ms. Ruth will come forward and provide us with the board appreciation report and recognition. Ms. Ruth?
Thank you. I have to wipe down for myself. Sorry, I now have advanced slides. Apologize. Okay. This month, Richland Two joins school districts across the nation honoring the commitment of our school board members. While we officially celebrate their service in January, these seven individuals before me this evening stand strong for public schools day in and day out, 365 days a year. They develop policies and make tough decisions on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. They bear responsibility for an annual budget of more than $300 million, 28,000-plus students, more than 3,700 employees, and 41 schools and centers. As part of the school board recognition month, Richland Two board members participated tonight in an official signing of the South Carolina School Board Member Ethical Principles. By signing the principles, school board members publicly vowed to uphold effective governance principles and pledged to improve public education in their community. Now, let's spend just a few minutes highlighting each of our members. Chairman James Manning is in the middle of his third term. Mr. Manning has the experience. Mr. Manning has the experience, knowledge, leadership, and understanding of what it takes to be a great leader. He has served as board chair several times and has guided the board through some tough challenges, some of which I have been right there beside him, showing great leadership. We appreciate all that he has given to the school board in his decades of service. Dr. Teresa Holmes is halfway through her first term on the school board and is serving as vice chair for this school year. What makes her a great school board member is that she has an amazing perspective from all sides. She grew up in the district, her children were educated in the district, and she has thirty years' experience in the educational field. Her sunny disposition and enthusiasm have added joy to the school board. Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker, who serves as secretary for this year, is in the middle of her second term for the school board. A Richland Two retiree, she brings a wealth of experience and knowledge to her work on the school board. During her career in Richland Two, she was honored with the Lifetime Achievement Award in Education, recognized as an award-winning principal and selected as Teacher of the Year. In fact, I recently found a photograph of a billboard of Dr. Caution Parker when she was Teacher of the Year. I handed it over to her so she could hold on to it. Ms. Agostini's high energy level and success in swimming competitions, triathlons, have translated well to the school board. And we often hear when our students come forward that she has taught them swimming lessons. Many, many, many students, I remember coming getting recognition, would mention that or she would remember seeing them in their lessons. She never misses an opportunity to just show her support for our students by attending countless events at our schools. Even now, if they're virtual and she gets an invitation, you can bet she's gonna show up. A Michigan native and an Indiana University graduate, she recently began her second term on the board. Dr. Monica Elkins just began her third term on the Richland Two school board, and she recently retired from education with thirty-plus years' experience as a teacher, administrator, principal, and professional. She works incredibly hard for the best interests of students and is a strong voice for her constituents. She looks for opportunities to promote programs that will open doors for learning for students who are diverse in their needs. Our newest member to the board is Mrs. LaShonda McFadden, who was elected in November with four children in the district ranging from elementary to high school, including middle school in there in the middle. You know she has her finger on the pulse of what's going on in Richland Two. She's also an avid community volunteer, including the Greater Columbia Community Relations Council. A big supporter of public education, Amelia Mackey has served as chair, vice chair, and secretary of our school board since she was elected in two thousand fourteen. It was her remarkable volunteer work in the district and community that led her to the school board. Leading up to her election, Ms. Mackey supported the district through her longtime service on numerous parent-teacher-student organizations and school improvement councils. Tonight, we presented our board members with a small token of appreciation for their work, and I wanted to just highlight two things about this gift. One is that you received a copy of the Coffee Bean book. Dr. Davis has turned a lot of people on to Richland Two about this book, has shared it with many of his leaders. I just want to read one little summary about it. Life is often difficult, it can be harsh, stressful, and feel like a pot of boiling hot water. The environments we find ourselves in can change, weaken, or harden us and test who we truly are. We can be like the carrot that weakens in the pot, or like the egg that hardens, or we can be like the coffee bean and discover the power inside of us to transform our environment. I hope you all enjoy reading this book as much as Dr. Davis's administrative team, and he have enjoyed it. Also, with the coffee theme, we found the purposeful packed gift box that we gave you tonight, and it has coffee and a coffee mug in it. But the reason we specifically chose this gift box is because of their mission. They use what they call purposeful purveyors as their vendors. Their items that are in the box represent minority-owned, women-owned companies. They empower under-resourced women and minorities and youth, train and hire individuals with barriers to employment, and promote environmental sustainability. So very much in line with our mission and vision for the district, as well as one of the goals of equity and removing barriers to that. So we felt like was a very appropriate way to say thank you. So on behalf of the entire Richland Two family and Dr. Davis, I thank our honorable school board members for leading Richland Two as we strive to be premier and give all our students opportunities to maximize their gifts and talents as they pursue their pathway to purpose. Happy School Board Appreciation Month to all of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And of course, we signed the poster, right, from the School Boards Association, where we all agreed to the sort of ethics and practice of being school board members. So I want to thank everyone for that, and we are making special accommodations for Ms. or Dr. Elkins to also sign that poster, since she couldn't be with us tonight. We will now move on to board and superintendent comments, and I will start with Dr. Elkins on the phone.
Just want to say thank you for all of the presentations that we've heard this evening. You guys have done an awesome job, love the detailed information that you shared with us, and thank you for all that you do. Want to also share a quote with you that says, coming together is a beginning, keeping together is progress, working together is success. So I just want to say to all of you, I look forward to being able to see you, but until we have enough respect for each other to have a conversation about policy ADD, you will only be able to hear my voice because I'm not going to flip myself or my colleagues or the faculty and staff and employees of Richland Two in danger of COVID. So I look forward to talking with you guys soon, continue to wear your masks, and stay safe.
Thanks. Okay, I will next hear from Dr. Holmes.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that did the presentation tonight. This was, as an educator for over thirty years and still working as an educator, this topic tonight was very near and dear to my heart. I think you can kind of tell I'm a little bit passionate about it. I also appreciate the amount of work that had to go into it from everybody and also from my fellow board members and also from you, Dr. Davis. We are truly a team. My mother said to me a long time ago, who's gone now, she said, you know, respect. Respect is a two-way street. Respect is a two-way street. If you don't give respect, then you should not expect respect. Because it's important to understand that everybody, even if you don't get your particular way on something, you still have to accept the fact that that's why we have a voting body. When the body votes, just how we saw in our country, you see what happens when people don't respect the democratic process and will try to usurp the democratic process for their own needs, ideology, or self-whatever. But the point is that we live in a democracy, and respect is a two-way street. And that means respecting the voting power of a board. That means respecting your colleagues. That means respecting that is not always yes, it's sometimes no. Having said that, you all have a very good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Caution Parker.
Okay, got it on. First, I'd like to say, I really, again, and I know I said it last time, I really appreciate the superintendent's highlights. I think that that's very uplifting and good to hear and good to know, and I really appreciate that very much. And I also want to say congratulations to you, Dr. Davis. You're doing a phenomenal job, you really are. And I really want to say thank you to the committee for the report. I mean, that just blew me away. Now, I've been originally to forty years, thirty-four working in the school district and six on the board. That makes me want to just come right on back to work and get in the classroom and get to work again. I was really impressed with that, and I'm looking forward to the next steps. Thank you so much. And thank you to all of you for the board appreciation dinner and the recognition and the gifts. I appreciate you more than you'll ever know. Thank you.
Be careful, Dr. Caution Parker, you might just have a teaching contract in the mail tomorrow.
Oh, I'll take it.
Ms. Agostini.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too just want to thank you all for the recognition for School Board Appreciation Month, and then also thank you to all the presenters that presented tonight. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. McFadden.
I would just like to say thank you to the staff out here, because I just looked around at everything that was on my desk when I came in, and I know it just didn't pop up here, that there was a lot of thought and effort put into everything from the boxes to the food, to making sure everything was on Facebook. It was a shock. I scroll through Facebook quite often, and I started seeing Dr. Manning, and then I seen him every day, and it was a real good thrill to see it because the community can see it as well. But I wanted to say thank y'all so much for all of your presentations that y'all are putting together for us, because I sat down and thought about, that's a lot of work. So I want to say thank y'all for that.
Thank you. Ms. Mackey.
I think I've already spoken and addressed all of the presentations that were presented tonight. So thank you again, echoing my colleagues' sentiments, Dr. Davis, on your recognition. And just wanted to say, keeping the main thing, the main thing, educating students. You all are working very hard. Our teachers are working very hard, our staff is working very hard, bus drivers, people who are trying to feed our students, students who only eat, you know, a district meal. There are those scenarios, students who are homeless. So for those people who are affected by the pandemic, and we all are indirectly, but some are impacted directly, so I'm praying for those families. Thank you for the folks who are working with trying to keep our students educated, whether they are face-to-face, whether they are virtual, whatever is going on in that particular phase or that student's house. Thank you for the people who are working with them, keeping the main thing, the main thing. We are in the midst of a pandemic unlike anything this nation has ever seen, and I never want to lose sight of that. With regard to School Board Appreciation Month, thank you all for the recognition. We're public servants. We are here to serve, not to be served, and in that regard, thank you for the service that you put forth for the students of Richland Two and this community, and I cannot thank you enough in all caps and a ton of exclamation marks. Bless y'all, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Mackey. Dr. Davis.
I want to first say thank you to our staff, again, for you being here and for your, all your energies and efforts in ensuring that we have a premier experience when we conduct our board meetings, providing our board with wonderful presentations and information regarding the opportunity gap and for all of you all who put in the hard work, the number of meetings that we had in preparation for this presentation. Again, thank you all for that time and energy. And Mr. Jackson from coming all the way from his school to ensure, don't know if he has a game tonight at his school, but we appreciate him being here as well. We have been practicing in the district board and to our community something called appreciative inquiry during this time of COVID. And in appreciative inquiry, you learn to first look at what's going well. What are the things that are going well? And from the appreciative inquiry exercises is where the superintendent highlights come from. We are conditioned, for whatever reason it is, to find out and address what's not working and focus and get locked in on that. And I believe that's where the source of contention comes from in issues in society, in families, and even in this district. We only want to talk about what's not right. And then we have to assign blame to that. Somebody is responsible for what's not right. And we code it in the words of things like accountability. Even in the midst of a pandemic with all the shortcomings and challenges that we've all been faced with, we have to pause for a moment and think about what's going well. And how then do we replicate what's going well? And so when we see ourselves functioning at our very best, at our peak, what should that look like? And let's figure out strategies to get us there. It pulls us out of a deficit mindset. It pulls us out of this mindset that things have to be wrong. Like, it's the lens in which you look through the world. Something's wrong, what is it that I can find that's wrong? And so we have to shift and stop and cover it and take that lens off and put that, put those lenses and those frames down and put on different lenses. Now, this doesn't mean that everything is rosy, because we have to figure out how do we replicate what's working for everyone? And that's the beauty and the power of appreciative inquiry. So in that spirit, we show appreciation to you as our board. We appreciate that you honor the first code of the ethics according to our board policy. And if you don't know what the first thing in the ethics code for our board policy is, always put kids first. That is the number one thing when it comes to being in ethics. It's always put kids first. And so the questions and the things that we do, we have to stop and ask ourselves, is this about me putting children, students, in this district first? That is very first, and I don't think it's by accident. Our mission is to ensure that all students are prepared to lead and excel in their chosen pathways. It is children first. That's the mission of our school district. To prepare our students in partnership, in partnership, to prepare our students to be global citizens, citizens of the world, those who are prepared to lead in their chosen, lead in their chosen pathways. That's the focus, children first. So I appreciate all the efforts that this board makes to always be able to answer that question in everything that we do. Is this about children first? We appreciate you for that, and we will then work to replicate, how do we ensure that everything that we do is aligned to putting children first in our district? Thank you.
Well, I guess there's not much left for me to say. So in order to put students first, I want to make sure everybody gets enough rest. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting if I can have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move for adjournment by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. All in favor, raise your right hand or say aye if you're on the phone. All right, six to zero. Thank you very much.